Call the meeting in order. This is the common council meeting of Tuesday, May 3, 2016. Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich?
Here.
Verhaelen?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Guzekowski?
Here.
And Alderman Gale and Kirkowski will be joining us shortly. Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the approval of minutes of April 19, 2016.
Guzekowski can make a motion to approve the minutes of April 19, 2016.
Second.
I got a second by Toman. Roll call.
Alderman, Verhaelen?
Yes.
Toman?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Stand.
All right. Under recognition, we have item four is a consideration of resolution number 11705-050316. It's a resolution of appreciation to Sam Lenda, a retired police officer who has served this city in the highest level of any police officer I can remember in the history of this city. We had the pleasure of attending his retirement ceremony on Friday at the Oak Creek Police Department. Great send off, lots of friends, former police officers, community members. So it was a great, with great honor that we sent him on his way to retirement. So I'm going to read his resolution, even though I read it at the ceremony. So whereas Sam Lenda began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on February 11, 1980, he's a full-time police officer, and whereas Sam has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life of the citizens of the city, and whereas during his 36 years and two months of service, Sam has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer, a crime prevention officer, emergency response unit member, and a use of force instructor, and a selected marksman. And whereas during Sam's career with the Oak Creek Police Department, he was known for his skills in construction, and was the lead project manager for the police department fitness room, and led the project for the emergency response unit obstacle course, saving the city of Oak Creek taxpayers thousands of dollars in construction costs. Whereas during his tenure with the Oak Creek Police Department, Sam was crucial in the development of the emergency response unit, which was, and was responsible for assisting the development of dozens of innovative policies and procedures which will ensure that he will forever leave his mark on our police department. Whereas Sam was the second responding officer to the shooting at the Sea Temple on August 5, 2012, eventually shooting the suspect and saving the life of Lieutenant Brian Murphy, as well as an untold number of other lives. And whereas because of his heroic acts at the Sea Temple, Sam Lenda was recognized with numerous awards, which include the National Association of Police Organizations Top Cop Award, the Oak Creek Police Department Life Saving and Medal of Valor Awards, the Congressional Badge of Bravery, and the highest possible award a law enforcement officer can receive, the Public Safety Medal of Valor, which was presented to Sam Lenda by the United States Vice President Joe Biden in Washington DC. Whereas Sam Lenda was recognized as the Oak Creek Citizen of the Year for the year 2013, and whereas Sam is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 36 years and two months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek, and will be retiring as one of the most decorated officers in the history of the Oak Creek Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Sam Lenda for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department, that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Sam Lenda and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Sam Lenda. I need a motion to accept that resolution.
Gale, move to adopt resolution 11705-050316, a resolution of appreciation to Sam Lenda, retiring police officer.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Thank you, Sam, and good luck in that retirement. Item five is a mayoral proclamation on Buddy Poppy Days, May 6, 7, and 8, 2016, at the Meyer Dietzick VFW Post 8482. I will read that proclamation. Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States, Meyer Dietzick Post 8482, of Oak Creek, Wisconsin, has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies will be held in Oak Creek on May 6, May 7, and May 8, and whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen Scafidi, Mayor of the city of Oak Creek, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of Buddy Poppies on these days set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation, or the sacrifices of our veterans. Be it further resolved that I urge all citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms that we continue to enjoy as American citizens. And we don't need a vote on that one. So we're going to move to, you want to do the poppy thing after the next one?
We'll read it.
All right. So item six is a mayoral proclamation on Poppy Days, May 13, 14, and 15, 2016, Oshlager Dahlman, American Legion Post 434, and Auxiliary, and the city clerk will read that proclamation.
Mayor proclamation, Poppy Days, May 13, 14, and 15, 2016, Oshlager Dahlman, American Legion Post 434, and Auxiliary. Whereas the Oshlager Dahlman, American Legion Post, and Auxiliary 434 have set aside Friday, May 13, Saturday, May 14, and Sunday, May 15, 2016, to honor all of our veterans of all wars by distribution of poppies on these days in our city. And whereas the annual distribution of poppies is one of the American Legion Post and Auxiliary's many veteran projects of which we are proud, and whereas all money is received from the distribution goes directly to the following. 60% of all money received will be distributed for direct aid to veterans and their families in need in the city of Oak Creek. 40% of all money received will be distributed for scholarships and loans for veteran children, rehabilitation projects at Soblocke VA Medical Center, Wisconsin Veterans Home at King, Wisconsin, Christmas gift shop at Soblocke VA Medical Center, Camp American Legion, a rehabilitation center for veterans, National Child Welfare Foundation, All Veteran Affairs, and rehabilitation programs. Be it therefore resolved that I, Stephen Scafidi, Mayor of the city of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim May 13, 14, and 15, 2016, to be Poppy Days in the city of Oak Creek. Be it further resolved that I encourage the citizens of Oak Creek to contribute generously for the annual poppy distribution by the American Legion Post and Auxiliary 434.
And we are joined by poppy princess Patricia Hogan, who will come around and distribute the poppies. Your camera. Thank you. If you've been around a while, you collect a lot of these things. That's one for every year of public service. And I have the proclamation, so when you're all done, and don't forget the audience is part of this as well, so get your wallets out. Media included. I will loan you the dollar if you don't have it. Somebody's got to be it. Okay. Item seven is a public hearing. It's a conditional use request submitted by Badger Coaches, Inc. for an amendment to the conditional use permit allowing for the operation of a private bus service storage yard located at 6819 South Howell Avenue in the first district. City clerk will read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by Badger Coaches, Inc. for an amendment to the conditional use permit allowing for the operation of a private bus service storage yard located at 6819 South Howell Avenue. Applicant is Badger Coaches, Inc. Property owner is Sharon Dull. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is April 7, 2016.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the director of community development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing under requests submitted by Badger Coaches, Inc. for an amendment to the conditional use permit, the property at 6819 South Howell Avenue, to allow for the operation of a private bus service storage yard. Just as a bit of background, the applicant had previously requested and received a temporary use permit to operate this private bus service storage yard where buses are parked and maintained through May of 2016 for this address. This was done through the powers of the zoning administrator, which has the authority to issue those temporary use permits that don't, are within two or three weeks. So while they've been operating under temporary use permit, they also have applied for the permanent conditional use amendment, which would allow for, again, the permanent use of this property for the private bus service storage yard. If approved, and the council does have the conditions and restrictions in front of them this evening, the property would no longer have the conditional use to operate an automotive and truck engine and body repair business and moving business such as U-Haul. The bus company itself would store approximately 25 buses outside. There would be some changes to the site plan which are needed in order to accommodate this conditional use, and these changes would come back before the planning commission at some point. There would be approximately 11 employees during business hours, with a maximum of 30 employees at different times of the day, depending on the cleaning of the buses, the scheduling of the buses, things of that nature. The operations will take place within the existing buildings, and there has been screening installed to the fence, shielding parking of those buses from other vehicles from Howell Avenue, and in addition, the applicant has also installed additional fencing north of Building C to further screen the buses from public view. With respect to fiscal impact of the proposal, the successful reuse of this property for an established business such as Badger Bus will sustain the value of this property and the taxes generated thereof. This is a public hearing, and I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendment to the conditional use permit for 6819 South Howell Avenue for a private bus service storage yard, please fill out an appearance slip, which are available in the back. Submit those to the city clerk, and once your name is called, please proceed to the microphone and direct your question and/or comment to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment on item number seven. First call. Second call. Third and final call for public comment on item number seven. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move, we'll close the public hearing and move to discussion of item number eight. It's a consideration of ordinance number 2803. It would approve a conditional use amendment for the property at 6819 South Howell Avenue, allowing for the operation of a private bus service storage yard in the first district. Open it up for any alderman comments. Alderman Bukavich?
Just to weigh in on what went in at planning with this, the applicant came before us a couple of times for zoning, and then, of course, plan approval on the fence. Obviously, the applicants met all requests that were made by the planning regarding the fence and the screening. So at this point in time, planning was all good with the plan, and we're all welcoming to have Badger come in. So that's it for planning.
All right. Do you have other questions? Alderman Gale?
Thanks, Mayor. Doug, are there any, no vehicle maintenance, so there's no repair, just turnover, turn around on the buses here in storage?
If the applicants here come forward, name an address for the record.
Hi, my name's Doug Fosno. I'm operations manager of Badger Coaches.
Doug, can you push your microphone up a little bit?
Up a little higher? Okay. My address is 7612 South 70th Street in Franklin. Basically, to answer that question, we're not doing any outside repairs. We're just maintaining and repairing our vehicles, preventative maintenance, oil changes, tires, stuff like that. All major repairs are done in our main office in Madison.
And then, one other question, Doug. The 22 stalls in front of the building, that's for employee parking, I imagine?
Any other questions or comments from the aldermen? Seeing none, motion on item number eight.
Gale, move to approve ordinance 2803, approving a conditional use amendment for the property at 6819 South Howell Avenue, allowing for the operation of a private bus service storage yard.
Bukavich will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
All right, moving to old business. Item nine is the mayor's aldermanic appointments. There is no change in the appointments for the year going forward. I'll quickly read them. To the Landscape and Beautification Committee, it's Alderman Guzekowski. To the Library Board, it's Alderman Guzekowski. To the Community Development Authority, CDA, it's Alderman Gale and Alderman Kirkowski. To the Community Center Board of Directors, it's Alderman Bukavich. To the Small Claims Committee, it's Alderman Verhaelen. To the Water and Sewer Utility Commission, it's Alderman Gale. Okay, all right. Then we'll move on to item 10. It's the common council president aldermanic appointments, and I'll let the common council president Gale read those for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Common council appointments will stay as they were. I'll just read them for the audience. On the Personnel Committee, Alderman Bukavich, myself, and Alderman Toman. Alderman Toman will chair that. Capital Improvements Committee, I'll be on that and chair, Alderman Guzekowski, Alderman Toman, license, myself, Alderman Kirkowski will chair, and Alderman Verhaelen, Planning Commission, Alderman Bukavich, Alderman Guzekowski, Board of Health, Alderman Kirkowski. Emergency Government, Alderman Kirkowski, Park and Rec, Alderman Bukavich, Traffic and Safety, Alderman Verhaelen. Finance, Alderman Bukavich, myself as chair, and Alderman Toman.
All right, and thank you, Alderman Gale, and we will continue on with the same group. So looking forward to working with everybody on those commissions and committees in the next year going forward. Moving on to new business, item 11 is a motion to concur with the mayor's appointments as follows. To the Board of Zoning, Housing, Appeals, a three-year term to expire April of 2019, Stacy Elhenny, 5540 East Ryan Road, Richard D. Yurkey, 10231 Hawk Circle. Need a motion on those appointments.
Gale, move to concur with the mayor's appointments as listed.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 12 was a motion to approve the 2016 vendor summary report on the amount of $630,154.79. Finance Director is here to answer any of your questions.
Bridget, can you just let everyone know what's a big ticket and kind of out of the blue, but item number five, just to close out on...
This was a bill for the completion of construction on South 13th Street at Rock University College in District Number Nine.
All of that construction occur, like, three years?
That was completed in 2010 and into 2011.
What's the point of your question?
Just making sure everyone knew.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? If none, motion?
Gale, move to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $630,154.79.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Under Engineering, a motion is authorized to the Engineering Department to enter into contract negotiations with the Community Design Group for the development and preparation of Safe Routes to School Action Plan, project number 16027, in various districts. City Engineers here to explain it all to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in 2014, council authorized Engineering to apply for a transportation alternative project grant through the Department of Transportation. This was specifically Safe Routes to School program. We did apply and were awarded a grant up to, for 80% reimbursement of the development of the plan, up to a maximum of $48,000. 2015, signed the state municipal agreement, have gone out now for requests for qualifications, received three packets, reviewed them, scored them, and basically the recommendation is to go with a company called Community Design Group. These were scored by three of us in engineering, including criteria such as understanding of the project, their staff, their specific safe routes to school experience, and their proposed project approach. So I'd be willing to answer any question you might have.
Questions or comments from the council? Quiet group tonight. Alderman Gale?
What did you anticipate they'd actually have some recommendations for us, and when possibly could you see some activity off of this?
So their proposal was we would get underway in the summer of this year, and start having meetings, surveys, engaging parents in the school district as the school year begins, and then by spring of 2017, have a draft of that plan.
And that'll be, you anticipate that being funded out of capital, CIP, or general fund, or?
The money is in place for this design effort. Again, then we would apply for reimbursement.
What about the potential on construction I'm talking about?
And basically, you know, a big part of this plan is to get a viable plan, one that would be the impetus for applications for further grant money to actually construct some of the projects that are identified in the plan.
Are those typically like 80/20 shares?
Some of them are. Some of them are 50/50 grants, but it's really a key need to secure this funding, to have this plan.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Motion on 13.
Bukavich will make a motion to authorize the Engineering Department to enter into a contract negotiations with the Community Design Group for the development and preparation of Safe Routes to School Action Plan, project number 16027.
Verhaelen, second.
Verhaelen, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Under Community Development, item 14 is a consideration of resolution number 11706-050316. It approves a certified survey map for the properties at 6871, 6881, 6881R, 6933, 6939, 6955, South 13th Street in the first district. Doug?
For the council's summary information, in June of last year, a CSM affecting these properties was approved by both the planning commission and common council. This CSM showed consolidation of the properties that were listed by the mayor as part of one lot in support of the planned expansion of the South Field Apartment Complex. The purpose of this CSM in particular is to incorporate a portion of vacated right-of-way of South 13th Street that was missing from the original CSM. No other changes are proposed at this time, so this is just a kind of a technical correction that incorporates that vacated right-of-way into the new South Field Apartments parcel.
Any specific questions on that? If nothing on 14, need a motion?
Gale, move to approve resolution 11706-050316, approving a certified survey map for the properties at 6871, 6881, 6881R, 6933, 6939, 6955, South 13th Street.
Bukavich will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
All right. Under licensing, since Alderman Kirkowski is not here, we'll hand it off to Alderman Verhaelen, who's also served.
License committee did not meet prior to the council meeting. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Motion to grant operator's license to the following. Favorable background report received, Zachary Kletz for Quick Trip, Lisa Hansen, 7-Eleven, Anthony Rourke, Walgreens, and Cameron Smith for Water Street.
Gale, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
16.
Motion to grant the Reserve Class B combination license to Bel Air Cantina Oak Creek, EBS Bel Air Cantina Oak Creek, Orton West Town Square Way, Kristen ITL agent, subject to receipt of sanitation approval and issuance of an occupancy.
Gale, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Consider motion to grant Reserve Class B combination license to Char Grill Incorporated, EBS Charco Grill in Otisree, 101 West Ryan Road, Jeffrey Mars Agent, subject to receipt of sanitation approval and issuance of occupancy.
Gale, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 18 is a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. 18A, Section 19.851E, to consider the terms of a proposed development agreement, including a TIF incentive grant for property owned by Northwestern Mutual, consisting of approximately 30 acres on the east side of extended South 20th Street, north of Drexel Avenue, and west of I-94. B, Section 19.851E, to consider a proposed second amendment to tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement by and between the city of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Medical Developer, Inc., HSA Project in the second district. Alderman Gale?
Gale, move to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, to consider the terms of a proposed development agreement, including a TIF incentive grant for the property owned by Northwestern Mutual, consisting of approximately 30 acres on the east side of extended South 20th Street, north of Drexel Avenue, and west of I-94. B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, to consider a proposed second amendment to tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement by and between the city of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Medical Developer, Inc., HSA.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
We will now convene into closed session. When we return, we'll turn the cameras back on and come back into the council chambers.
Gale, move to reconvene in open session.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Be no action on 20. Item 21 is a motion to approve a professional services agreement with RA Smith National, Inc.
I didn't finish my...
Oh, I'm so anxious to move forward.
I was waiting for Kerkowski.
Do your thing. Wow.
What?
Go ahead.
It was a motion to reconvene into open session.
Got it.
And I have Toman, Gale, and Guzekowski. I was waiting for Kerkowski.
I said aye.
Oh, Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye. I apologize to you guys. The right side was neglected. I apologize for that. Alright. Item 21 is a motion to approve a professional services agreement with RA Smith National, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $105,600 for wetland permitting, staking, and detailed infrastructure plans and specifications for the Phase II extension of South 20th Street, approximately 1,600 linear feet north of its current planned terminus in the Second District. Need a motion.
Gale, move to approve a professional services agreement with RA Smith National, Inc. in an amount of not to exceed $105,600 for wetland permitting, staking, and detailed infrastructure plans and specifications for the Phase II extension of South 20th Street, approximately 1,600 linear feet north of its current planned terminus.
Guzekowski, Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 22 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11691-041916. It's a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Tax Incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Medical Developer, Inc., HSA Project in the Second District. Need a motion.
Avichal make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11691-041916, a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Tax Incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Medical Developer, Inc., HSA Projects.
Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And finally, item 23 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11697-041916. It's a resolution approving the parking and access agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Medical Developer, Inc., HSA Project in the Second District. Need a motion.
Avichal make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11697-041916, a resolution approving the parking and access agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Medical Development, Inc., HSA Project.
Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
On a question?
Go ahead. Alderman Toman.
Are we going to comment on the HSA for the median? Was that part of the plan for the mayor or Doug?
At your direction, I'm happy to comment on it.
I'd like to hear.
You want me to say something right now?
Sure.
Oh, excellent.
Well, you were going to say it after.
Yeah. No, it's no problem. Excited to have that partnership. We think that that last big piece of Drexel Town Square on the northwest corner, the medical piece was an important part of making this one of the most significant developments in Oak Creek. Not just Oak Creek, Wisconsin, maybe nationally. There's very few sites that combine the elements that we have at Drexel Town Square. Residential, retail, restaurant, park, Wetlands Park, Public Square, City Hall Library, hospitality with a hotel soon to be under construction, and finally, the medical piece. There's not a lot of projects like that. It's a big deal for Oak Creek. It's a big deal for the state. One of lots of big deals that we're going to be talking about in the next upcoming time period, so stay tuned. How's that? You're welcome. Where are we at? Roll call? Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Motion to adjourn.
Kerkowski make a motion to adjourn. Avichal, second.
I think I heard Bakovic. We'll go with Alderman Bakovic. Roll call.
Alderman Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.